Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. We're at eleven o'clock agenda item. This is not an action item. This is a discussion with I T D. I hope see some unknown faces out there regarding the dying trees along Highway fifty-five. You guys want to come up? How many are you? Four? Come on up to the big table.
Notice the dying, the dying trees or?
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see if we can get these microphones to work.
D Y I N.
And that went on?
I could die in some.
Oh, I got, I got a whole hours with the conversations, not just dying trees. I got a whole list of stuff.
Audio systems that went on.
It is. We can all yell pretty well.
There's a mic above you. It's just you have to, you have to talk loudly, so.
What does it talk up with the mic?
You just gotta talk up.
So what I'd like to do is have you guys maybe start left to right, introduce yourself for the record.
My name's Eric Copeland. I'm the Field Operations Manager for District Three of I T D.
Wendy Howell, I'm Senior Transportation Planner for D three.
Thank you.
Vincent Trumboli, District Three Program Manager for Planning and Development Services.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Jason Brinkman. I'm the District Engineer for District Three Southwest Idaho.
And I think you've been here before, haven't you?
I have, sir, yes.
Yeah, did you get your bat chewed?
Not that I recall, but I'm willing to try new things.
So did you replace Caleb?
I did, yes.
I don't remember seeing you before.
Well, and honestly, Commissioner Mopin is the one that kind of put this thing together, so I'm gonna let her lead the discussion. The only thing I do want to say before we started, I appreciate you guys cleaning up the mess that was down there. Low banks, I think there's still some more work to do below the road that left a lot of big ponderosa there that are kind of an eyesore, but I appreciate the fact you guys jumped on that and made that a lot safer spot. I drove that road for twenty-seven years. All winter long, seven days a week feeding cows, and so I've seen a lot of that stuff come and go along there, but appreciate the effort. I'm gonna turn it over to Sherri and let her lead the discussion.
And it's just, you know, it was time to come in and meet new people and just have a discussion on what's going on and what our long-term conversations are, so. Uh, this is open dialogue back and forth. I have a whole list of things I'd like to discuss, so you guys jump in as you, as you want to have a discussion on it, so. Um, the dead trees has been an ongoing conversation. I know that there was conversation about having some type of a study done between the Forest Service and I T D on why those trees are dying, so that we don't continually have our scenic byway destroyed. I know that there was, they tried to put a line item this year in the budget that did not pass through J F A C, so that we were trying to get some additional funding in order to help with this, but I'd like to know where the study is and what you think a timing is to get a study done.
So, we, uh, don't have anything programmed yet at this point, but we are, uh, is that better? So we, we, we are looking into scoping a study from about forty-two miles from Round Valley to Dine Hard to look at potentially winding, passing lanes, turning lanes, signalization, as well as climbing lanes. I know that little Donner is of, we talked, Commissioner, about that before. Um, that's something that is of concern to this commission and certainly to the folks that live here in the Valley County. Our hope is within the next few months to go to our board and, and request that, but there, there is some money out there for planning. We're trying to figure out the best way for us to, to work with our board and, and with the the executives at I T D to go ahead and, and move forward, certainly for the department. This corridor is a priority. Uh, we can look at the average daily traffic numbers through here. And last, uh, July, we set the, the record, and it just keeps going up every, every summer and every year. As you know, and we'll talk a bit more today, I know you'll ask about Rainbow Bridge potentially and some other things. We'll talk about those, but we do have some, uh, projects right now aimed towards making improvements in the corridor, uh, including the Rainbow Bridge. Uh, we have a, a whole bunch of, uh, hot seal projects, or I shouldn't say hot seal, but seal coat projects this summer, um, through the area as well, so. We also have, uh, Round Valley Passing Lane, uh, just to, to the north of, of Round Valley there. Um, we have that in our Safety and Capacity Program for fiscal year thirty, and we'll start to work on developing that project as well. So, um, as far as, uh, as a corridor study, you know, we'll look at all the traffic data. Uh, we'll also, uh, take a look at, uh, modeling. We'll model the corridor and try to get an idea of what the future volumes will look like. We'll compare, um, your, we'll look at all of your comprehensive plans, all the transportation plans with all of the cities and with the county um, throughout the corridor and, and also use that to help us identify locations for future improvement.
I want to make sure we're answering the right question. So, uh, Chairman, Commissioner Mopin, uh, I want to make sure your question was about the corridor study and not about a tree study.
Actually, a tree study.
Yeah.
On the dying, but I, I want to know if salt is the reason or not. Corridor study was the next one, so therefore we'll expand on that.
Honestly, the way you ended that question, I thought you were maybe talking about a tree study too, but when I started talking to you, you didn't stop me. I just kept going.
That was gonna be part of the conversation anyway, so therefore it doesn't matter which one comes first.
So Commissioner, with regard to the tree study, uh, I T D has not commissioned a specific study for Highway fifty-five of yet. Um, we have, however, sought the advice and counsel of a number of parties, including the Forest Service, uh, some of the folks at the University of Idaho and others that, um, are familiar with trees and their multiple mortalities. The advice that we've gotten, uh, late with regard to that, um, specific to Highway fifty-five is that some portions of the route, uh, down around Banks to Horseshoe Bend are very low in elevation in the range of which, uh, ponderosas or yellow pines would ordinarily grow. Uh, that challenges the trees somewhat, and it has a lot of stressors related to climate conditions and weather and other events. It seems that pretty much everything that could happen climatically, you know, potentially puts stress on the trees. Too dry of a winter, too wet of a winter, too wet of a spring, uh, and it, it affects them through a number of ways. Whether it's, uh, sun scalding or funguses or susceptibility to beetle kills, um, as well as what effect any salt or salt spray would have on the trees. So, the, uh, arborists and, and forest ecologists that we've talked to certainly don't, uh, acquit salt of a cause of tree mortality, but they also don't indict it as its primary cause. It's, it's somewhere down the list of all the things that affect trees. So they knew of specific concerns in this area with certain funguses that thrive in wet springs or cool summers. Uh, they know of some beetle activity, um, and they, they certainly, um, advise that salt might contribute to that multi-mortality, but they weren't, uh, contributing a significant effect to the salt utilization.
Have you guys changed the salt type to be more environmentally friendly because that's going right into the river? And so are you using the blue salt on that section of the road now? Or I know that it was like Patty Flat South?
Correct. We, uh, we've been using, it's a four C salt. It's, uh, we've been using it in Cascade for the last three years, and last two years has been in Banks as well. And we're starting to spread that out across the entire district over time. It's a little more expensive. We use less. Or that's the big, big saving point is we use a lot less material using that.
So are you using it now from Patty Flat?
Patty Flat.
Route north also?
No, not yet.
Do you know when you would be?
We're hoping in the next year or two, we will go, including Meadows and that. Apparently, we have it in, in, uh, Mountain Home, Banks, Cascade, Weezer, and in Plymouth with plans to move it to more places. It's a question of using up the stockpile we already have.
You could go use it somewhere other than the McCall area. That'd be great. Call it out of here. What could we do to help support the conversation around doing this type of a study sooner rather than later? You need a lot of support from this council in order to go to your board? Can I come and present to your board? How could we help support the study on the, the way that trees are dying?
Commissioner, great question. Um, as always, your expressed preferences, uh, including in writing, are helpful to communicate your intent, share your intent. We do have a Board Outreach Workshop in June. Uh, we'll certainly be sending invitations out for anyone who would like to attend or send any communications at that opportunity. Um, but of course, our, our board and department will accept, uh, your, your feedback and your correspondence at any time, and we'd be happy to share that with them.
Well, and I think it's important for everyone to realize that this doesn't just affect, the salt doesn't just affect the trees. Um, I've got hayfields along Highway fifty-five that, when you guys plow, it ends up clear out into the hayfields, and that part of the field now is, is pretty weak. It's all, I mean, you can see it all along the fence. The grass doesn't like that salt condition. Years ago, there was a fellow who used to plow roads by the name of George Cole. I don't know if you guys remember him. But George had an invention that he put on those sweep plows, force that snow back down into the borrow pit instead of just letting it go willy-nilly, hitting trees, hitting hayfields, hitting whatever it went by. And I, and I brought this up numerous times, and I think that would really go a long way for, to solve this situation, to keep that salt in the borrow pit instead of spraying it, mailboxes on any, anything that's along the road. And I hope maybe somebody will get, catch that and maybe look into it. It solved a lot of those, because we've been through this before, but it's not, doesn't just affect trees. It affects farm ground as well. I live south between Alpha Grange and the, and Clear Creek. On both sides of the highway. And literally, that grass is twenty, thirty feet out, it goes about this high, and it just sits there. It grows very acidic with the salt. And not only that, but it also rusts barbed wire. And if you think about miles and miles of barbed wire that hits, it takes barbed wire out in about five years. It just rusts right through it. So there's a lot of other things this is affecting besides the trees down below.
You also get, you know, the fisheries. I mean, that's, I, we get in trouble personally. I mean, if we touch a river with any kind of dirt, and yet we're getting salt dumped into it all, all went along.
Well, I think that's one of the conversations, right, is are we better off going back to a ten-to-one salt, which is what it was when George was here? Uh, so you go back to a ten-to-one salt, uh, or sand to salt, and we're gonna do a lot more damage, environmental damage to the rivers with the salt mix that we will, or the sand mix, excuse me.
Oh, and I think the sand took out a lot of windshields at that time. A lot of people were pretty disgruntled about cracked windows by spring. I don't think it's necessarily what kind of salt you're using. I think if you can save money on a grate, but I think it's how far and how fast that plow moves depends a lot on where that snow goes. And you can see falling the snowplow. It'll go twenty, thirty feet up past the, right away past the fence. And so it's like, well, let's push that snow back down the bar. To me, it's an easy fix, but.
I would think that technology has evolved past the point of using salt and sand, and there's got to be more environmentally friendly ways of doing this work.
Snowplow driver, drive slower. Go as far.
We'll, we'll only go about thirty-five miles an hour. That's what they should be going.
Yeah, and that is, that is about it, or less.
And so. That's, that's kind of our speed where we, where we set at. We'll be a little faster than that on the freeway, but.
We use salt too at the county, sure, for certain intersections, as, you know, bridges, that kind of stuff. It's not that it's a bad product. I think it's a great product because you're around here forty years ago when they didn't salt anything, especially Highway fifty-five, it was damn scary.
Right, we used to run the snow floors.
And then they used to do just the corners.
Yep.
And then you hit the straight stretch, and it was like willy-nilly wherever you went. So it's gotten a lot better, and you guys, I think, do a marvelous job making it safe. We just gotta figure out how to keep it inside the right of way, and I think we all get along great.
I think the blue salt, so when I knew that what was happening at that, you know, at the Patty Flat Road, I actually watched it because I drive from McCall. So the difference between just the road base, between the north side of the county and the south side, it was, this blue salt is extremely good.
Works pretty well, doesn't it?
It does, and you can actually see it on the roadway. So if it's something that's working, then, you know, and it's more environmentally friendly, we should be using.
Just from, just from using less, right?
Absolutely.
And no meg chloride.
No, Meg, that was a big step. Uh, Meg, you know, Vince, you were talking about a plan to come up and look at the corridor. Are we gonna have any influence on what intersections get looked at as far as turn lanes, decel lanes, all that kind of stuff? Because we've got three or four intersections right now that are pretty dangerous.
Lake Fork.
Lake Fork, ELO, Harrick.
And what you guys did in McCall, did you guys do that intersection in Dine Hard there? Or was that the city?
It's the city in perpetual.
That's, that's the city.
Yeah, it was, it, it works really well. I mean, I've heard comments from a lot of folks. They like the way that, that intersection's working. And the way Donley West is going, uh, an intersection set up like that would work really well for that intersection, because it's, it gets a lot of traffic, and we're getting more and more development west on, uh, West Drovesbury out there.
If I could just thank you for that feedback, Commissioner. And Mr. Chairman, uh, the answer to your question is yes. Um, everybody that is a stakeholder in the corridor will have a chance to comment on whatever their thoughts, issues are. Certainly, that is the reason why we're going to look into your comprehensive plans uh, with a corridor study to get a sense, uh, of what those key intersections are, both now and into the future. Um, so we can develop plans to work with you to, to mitigate those issues. And yes, I know it's getting really crowded up there toward the north toward McCall, and there's quite a few intersections that we'll look at. It's a, you know, potentially, we're looking at about forty, what, forty-two miles from mile plus forty-three.
Well, if you guys decide that you're gonna do some of those, at least involve us in on how you're gonna rate those. Because I think we know who are, our worst intersections are and are not so worst, and give us that ability, because I think it's, I know in my case, Lake Fork intersection is real dangerous. We have a lot of big trucks that go there to the county shops and beyond. Those kind of intersections, I think ELO is another one that's very dangerous. A lot of wrecks there. Even though it's a forty-five mile an hour zone, it doesn't seem to be, uh, people go a lot faster. I just think, you know, we would like to do whatever we can to help you guys with grants or support letters or whatever we gotta do to fixies.
All, all of those things, and of course, you know, public involvement is essential for our department. If you have the opportunity, Jason mentioned, coming up in June, um, at our, uh, Board Workshop, Commissioner Mopin came last year. And, uh, it's core to what we do, and in over the last few years, we've traveled the state engaging commissioners from every county, cities, mayors, council members. And so from our board to our director, uh, it's something that's really important. So we put a premium on it when we do these types of corridor studies or any type of, you know, N I P A analysis, whatever the case may be. Because we want to, uh, do and work on the projects that mean the most to the community. Certainly, uh, we, you know, we, we, we are experts, right? We, we have our thoughts and opinions, but those are always shaped by the public. They're always shaped by local elected officials and the, that are, you know, put into your seats because that's what their constituents want, so. It's of the utmost importance to us as, as not just a district, but I T D as a whole.
So can you guys tell us, because we have lots of time, how the discussion with McCall City's going on the swap with Dine Hard and Lake Shore Drive? Where are we at? Wendy, it's your turn. You have said it.
It's going really well. The, March twenty-eighth, um, we will have our, our last meeting, and that's where the, um, evaluation scores are, and we'll know who we're hiring. Tabulated, and then we'll know who we're going to contract with, and then they have to do an agreement.
So is this a study or is this an actual construction?
It's, it's a study.
It's a study, okay.
Improve multimodal function, safety, and efficiency, define, design, and prioritize improvements along fifty-five, the existing route, as well as looking at Dine Hard and Boynton.
So this is for the grant you guys got?
Correct.
This is that, so this is the implementation of that planning grant?
Um, is there, do you know, is there a hundred-foot right of way through there for a state highway? I guess that's what the study's probably for, huh?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, generally not. Uh, the right of way has meandered there somewhat. There's some places where it's as little as, uh, the statutory twenty-five feet.
Right, that's what I thought.
So yeah, no, it, it's predominantly not wider in that case. Of course, uh, you know, much of Dine Hard was acquired when, uh, went in, what was that, fifteen, twenty years ago? And so some of that is wider, uh, some of Boynton is wider, but as far as Third and Lake goes, uh, it's relatively narrow in most places.
So we're looking at buying right of way and all that stuff too?
Yeah, and I, um, Wendy has the detailed scope, but I mean, the, this grant, uh, that has been secured, uh, can do, you know, both the planning effort and environmental scans as well as some of the preliminary design work. And so they'll be able to look at specific design elements in the right of way, uh, of which I think, you know, some of the, what we would call cross-sectional elements of the road, you know, what kind of pathways or sidewalks, does it have parking? How many lanes and how wide? Uh, how's drainage handled? It'll look at all of those sort of things, really on, on both paths, both Third and Lake as well as, uh, what exists on Dine Hard and Boynton. With the, the eye toward what each of those would need, uh, especially if we were to swap routes. Which is one of the considerations in the back of the mind of that study.
Have you guys done any study, Wendy, on the drainage issue there?
No, that'll, that'll come with the study.
That'll come with it, because I think that's gonna be a big part of this issue.
I agree.
Mitigating that would be a big concern.
Right now, between the pavement and where your right of way ends, this is the biggest mess I've ever seen. I mean, you literally can bury cars. Pueblo Lindos, Frenchies, I mean, there is, there are some huge issues that need to be mitigated. And so this, this study's gonna be great, but I don't know what you guys could do in the meantime. There is some patching that needs to be done. You literally can bury your tires in a couple of those properties.
It's on the approaches?
Excuse me?
It is on the approaches, and they can't do anything because it's your right of way. And so, you know, I mean, landowners are really stuck. Pueblo Lindo has a lake from a lot. Caleb and I had a lot of discussions about your drainage, and, you know, yeah, he said, "We don't have a problem with drainage. It drains off the road." And I said, "Right into your right of way," of which it stops on private property and nobody can fix it. So, um, there are some real issues, and especially in front of, you know, Pueblo Lindos is really bad, Frenchies is really bad. So there are some areas that need some attention. Um, in front of the car wash, I loved it because I had my car washed this weekend, and then I immediately fell on the hole. So actually, I had two car washes, and now it's dirty again. Um, that's another one. I mean, there are just some areas that you guys need to come dump some gravel in. Problem. Asphalt would be great, but we're gonna exchange it. You guys can figure out what the long-term mitigation is, but in the short term, that would be great.
Wendy, on the meeting of the twenty-eighth, is that a public meeting?
No.
So will there be a report issued or anything that we would get a chance to look at?
Contract will come out of the meeting.
Do the study, and that's it, okay. And I'm assuming that's a year-long or what, two-year study, do you know?
Had you not asked, I wouldn't have known.
I won't ask, never mind.
January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, is what it looks like.
So it's a two-year?
And that's a RACE grant, and one of the benefits of getting a RACE grant is, there's RACE planning grants, and there's also RACE construction grants. I'm not saying we're going to get it, but it exponentially increases your opportunity to get RACE construction funding. If you've done a good job working with your partners and developed some good preliminary engineering, and then you can advance that potentially into a RACE construction grant. So it's really a great grant to get because not only can you do that, you know, preliminary design, right of way, and everything that Jason talked about, or, excuse me, uh, environmental scan, but then it makes you really competitive when you go for RACE construction grants.
And that's the intent of the city of McCall.
And thank you for working together on that. There was concerns on who was gonna write that grant. Like, who cares? Write the grant. You both have grant writers. Figure it out. And Delta did a great job on that, so that was exciting.
When you're talking RACE grant, it'll cover all the construction costs.
Poten, well, I don't know. I don't know what the matches are on a RACE construction, uh, and I, uh, but right now, we have a RACE grant to do the study, essentially, a study.
Right.
A planning level study, uh, with, who will include some preliminary engineering. The construction, we'd have to figure out how we want to fund that, and that's part of what they're gonna look into as well is, you know, what will the costs be and how would we realign and, and how would we fund it?
Well, it's the priorities.
Yeah.
Okay, next question. What is the, the latest on the intersection at, uh, South Fork at Banks? What's the plan there? We got a plan yet?
Mr. Chairman, we, uh, we've identified funding to develop a design for what we would call the permanent fix. And, uh, when I say the permanent fix, as it exists today, there is a one-lane bridge that leads to the parking area that the rafters use and as well as the site that I T D leases for its maintenance shed. That is a significant barrier to signalizing that intersection. So we have been, uh, for the last two years, working with, uh, a direct federal lands grant through Western Federal Lands, studying various alternatives, various concepts for the intersection. The study identified that signalization, traditional signalized intersection was really the, the best option for that intersection long-term. Uh, the flagging scenario worked very well in the interim, but as traffic continues to grow, it'll become more and more necessary to look at signalization there.
And as word gets around, you can't find people because they're scared to death to go sit at that intersection.
So the, um, the need for signalization drives us to needing additional lanes, basically on all legs of the intersection, because for a signal to work well, you need to be able to separate left-turning traffic from through traffic, so the left turners don't hold up through traffic. As well as you really need a wider bridge, uh, two- or three-lane bridge instead of a one-lane bridge. So we are working on the design concept of that intersection. Uh, that'll be, uh, an R F P that's out here very soon for, uh, a design of both a three-lane bridge to that, uh, west side as well as, uh, adding on to or replacing the South Fork Bridge on the south side of that intersection and signalization there. We are also studying what we might do in the interim and whether there would be any interim signal configuration that might be able to better accommodate traffic in lieu of the flagging at that location. That is a challenging concept, to say the least. You have to handle that special one-lane bridge situation very carefully, where you actually have to stop people on the other side, which increases the amount of time you have to give to clear that bridge when the light does turn green, and, uh, you have to watch for, you know, conflicts of people using the bridge the wrong way or parked on the bridge when we have this green light on the other direction, so. So it's, it's challenging. Our, our signal design folks a little to figure out if there's an interim concept that can be operated until a bigger project gets there.
So Jason, um, I know you guys have a lease with the Forest Service on that station. Did that get renewed? Because I've heard discussions about moving that to Horseshoe Bend.
The Forest Service, uh, did renew the lease most recently about two years ago, and I think at the time, it was a three-year lease. So they've got us on a pretty short hook right now. Uh, they used to give us twenty-five-year leases. They're down to three-year leases. Probably be one year the next time, so, um, depending on, you know, current administration, who the Forest Ranger is at the time, affinity for having I T D in that particular location seems to be a little hot and cold.
Ebb and flow, the same thing up here.
So, um, we are looking at what alternatives we might exercise. Uh, we've got property in Horseshoe Bend that could potentially be a manned maintenance location. We talked before about whether Garden Valley would ever be part of the plan, so, um, as it stands right now, we're, you know, looking at Horseshoe Bend as a preferred alternative site. But that's not a done deal yet. We don't have funding for a bigger shed there. Or do we know what it would look like? Or do we know what it would look like if we were to leave Banks? So we'll be working with the Forest Service on that as we develop that intersection project as far as what the possibilities are there.
Back to the dead trees. So because we only, um, you guys kind of cleaned some areas, most of it's south of us. You did a little bit of work on Little Donner, I think. And that'll look great, you know, kudos. But there's a lot more work to be done. So are you guys doing what, a budgeted line item every year? How can we help support clearing of those, the dead trees still? Again, I had one fall in front of me a month ago and sixty-five miles an hour, you know, you get a twelve-inch tree come down in front of you. It was a little spooky. So it, the work's not done.
No, we agree. Um, we have a, uh, project in the works for this spring to cut down trees between mile marker seventy-nine and mile marker ninety-one, which is Banks to the end of the Forest Service property. We're hoping to get that underway here soon and, and be completed with that between now and Memorial Day. We don't wanna try and play up there between Memorial Day and Labor Day. That doesn't work well. And that's, I think that's something we're looking at going forward is, is to, you know, that annually. We not only do we have fifty-five, we have ninety-five, we also have Highway twenty-one. All we have, you know, any place you got a road through a forest, you're gonna have trees.
You guys still use the, uh, I don't know if this is the right word, prisoners?
We have, yeah, we have offender, uh, I think proper terminology now is offender labor.
Offender labor. Thank you for that.
Inmates.
Inmates.
Yeah. Anyway, uh, yes, we, uh, we use them, uh, just, we're in the process of, uh, rewriting the contract. We should have a crew on.
Oh, good.
In the next month or so.
I think those guys love it. Get some out of there.
They're hard workers. They work their tails off.
They learn their trade. We need sawyers terribly bad. So they can learn how to be a sawyer. You can make good money.
So Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, if I may, um, the tree issue is complex. And I think for your, you know, discussion with us and maybe just the record, there's a number of things that we've certainly come to think about with regard to tree maintenance. One of which, trees are, are ever-growing and densifying, particularly as we manage fire cycles and with, you know, little logging and things today. It may not be apparent to everyone, but I'm sure it is to you. ITD's highway right-of-way is also comprised of multiple underlying ownerships. So some of Highway fifty-five, for example, is on a Forest Service easement. Some of it is on a BLM easement or withdrawal. And then, of course, there's some ITD-owned property, uh, as part of that right-of-way. The underlying ownership causes additional complexity with the management of trees. Uh, it is not abundantly clear at this point where ITD's authority for trees, for example, on a Forest Service easement exactly lie. And that's something we have to coordinate with the Forest Service. Uh, we're happy to report that they've been great partners. They've been very understanding and encouraging of us, uh, managing the trees. Uh, but there are things like NEPA environmental reviews, just by virtue of being on, uh, the forest, as well as, uh, statutory issues that they deal with, like timber sales. So if any of that timber, uh, any of those trees are viewed as merchantable timber, then we have to go through a process of evaluating the board footage and the merchantability of those for a sale.
Oh, my goodness.
I think I should dedicate all those right-of-ways to the county so we can actually do work outside the forest.
Well, we've, we've pursued the same, uh, why can't ITD simply own or manage those as we see fit? And the, the answer is that it is quite literally an act of Congress to transfer federal lands. Um, and so easements are really the best that those agencies can do without some congressional action put them in the state's order. The, um, hazard tree distinction is yet another layer of complexity. Certainly, you know, agencies like the Forest Service or BLM will identify hazard trees at certain locations like recreational sites. So, you know, they'll work with us. Uh, we often collaborate with their hotshots or others to clear trees from campgrounds or recreational sites. Uh, the Forest Service does not appear to have a broader hazard tree program. If, if you're on the forward, forest generally, lots of hazards exist and you're pretty much on your own. And they really don't treat the highway right-of-way any differently. So as far as identification of any hazards that come from trees in the right-of-way, they largely leave that to the roadway jurisdictions, um, yourself, if it's a county highway or, uh, or us if it's a state highway. ITD's own experience with regard to those trees is that we clear more green, live trees from the road in the winter than we ever do dead trees. Um, so there's a lot of concern about what the effect of tree mortality is and, and tree deaths. And certainly, you know, brown or dead trees can be unsightly in certain circumstances. But we've, we clear far, far more green trees from the road because they collect the snow and are susceptible to wind damage in the winter. We also find that many of those green trees that we cut, as well as dead ones, come from outside of what is currently ITD's right-of-way from its highway easement. So, uh, given the steep nature, some of these slopes, you know, trees and rocks and things certainly come from outside of the right-of-way that affect, uh, the right-of-way. And sometimes even from downhill from the highway that because of unusual wind pattern or things will fall back across the highway. So it's, it's extremely difficult to identify two oh one, a specific tree as being a hazard. In some regards, all trees adjacent to the road could be a hazard, much like all rocks or deers or deer or, you know, mudslides or other things could be a hazard. So there, there's certainly multiple things that ITD, you know, looks to maintain and, and make as safe as possible in the right-of-way, trees being one of them. Uh, so to that end, we are embarking on what we believe will be an annual tree maintenance, uh, contract. Uh, this year, I think we have about a half a million dollars dedicated to that. And that'll move around the district on an annual basis, uh, between the priorities that Eric identified on Highway twenty-one, Highway fifty-five, Highway ninety-five and other routes, uh, as well as routes statewide.
So is it, um, is it a hassle? I mean, when you consider a hazard tree, I mean, everybody can tell when you have a hazard tree. Do they give you guys pretty much the go-ahead, even whether it's on BLM or Forest, to go ahead and deal with that hazard tree? Or do they have to put their nose in it?
Trees that have been identified as specific hazards, our experience is that the Forest Service is very willing, uh, or the BLM is very willing to, uh, s- remove, uh, basically out of herbal.
Okay.
It's when it gets into a broader, more, uh, prescriptive or more proactive stance. Those trees that, you know, might be standing dead but are not identified as a specific hazard, not leaning, not fire-scarred, not, you know, otherwise discernible as a specific hazard. Of course, we all know that if a tree stands dead long enough, it will eventually fall, right? And that's have concerned us in places where there have been large number of tree kills, like in the Pioneer Fire on Highway twenty-one. We know those trees are on a clock. Uh, we need to get to the ones that could fall onto the roadway before nature does it on its own.
I had a thought that maybe the county should have some kind of a marketing program too for our underlying landowners that have dead trees along the road. That it would behoove them in order to remove their own trees, not wait for, you know, if they think ITD's gonna come and do it, but actually have property owners remove those dead trees. There's a few of them that, you know, they fall, they're, they're gonna be liable for whatever happens. So, uh, I think maybe we could have a county marketing program around that.
And Commissioner, that and, uh, you know, a significant number of the trees along fifty-five that are in private ownership are actually DF Development trees. Uh, DF Development has been very understanding of our need to manage trees and has worked with us to, to clear any of those that might present hazards as well. But it's, again, a large number of trees and it's difficult to spot which particular one might fall in a given, yeah.
There's a few of them just south of Lake Fork that are all dead. There are large trees that are, are gonna be an issue here soon, so.
Okay, um, is there anyone in the audience that wants to ask any questions or make a comment? Come on up to the mic, introduce yourself.
Done yet, what are you turning?
We, we still got plenty of time.
I have to say something. I'm Harry Stathis. I work for ITD at the Cascade Shop, uh, do maintenance on Highway fifty-five. So I just want the commission to know that the efforts of ITD with the blue salt change has been tremendous. I mean, it's, it's so awesome. We use, uh, half of what we used to use was white salt and no mag chloride. So the studies that, that'll go on with the, the trees that you're talking about, it's, I mean, it, it needs to happen. It's growing pains. Uh, what is there, like nine thousand cars a day on Highway fifty-five now? Something like that?
That's on a Monday, Harry.
Uh?
That's on Monday.
Yeah, and then twelve thousand from the intersection south. So, yeah, it's definitely a, it's gonna be part of our maintenance. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Josh, head your hand up. Come on up.
I'm Josh Hurley. Thanks for coming up and, and having the conversation. I was curious if you guys have considered, um, like deforesta- deforestation setbacks, kind of like Oregon does with all of their highways that kind of seem relative to the speed. Jeff and I were back there talking about it, we were kind of talking about, why isn't that an option of just for animals and for the, the hazards and all that stuff of just, just basically clearing out a certain amount based on the speed of the highway so that, uh, it increases kind of that visualized setback? And then any green tree, any dead tree or whatever, you know, is not a hazard? Has that been part of the conversation?
It's a scenic byway, Josh.
Is that what it is? It comes down to people like the trees there? Yeah.
Scenic byway. I mean, it's been designated as a scenic highway. So I think we have some obligation to that.
Keep as many of them as you can. Yeah, thank you.
And we're trying to walk that line between the two, right?
Yeah. Chairman, if you'd like us to address that specifically, there, there are corridors where ITD does exactly that. They're primarily places where the understory is predominated by lodgepole pine and where they're all of a certain age class. So for example, uh, in the Stanley Basin around Cape Horn on Highway twenty-one or seventy-five area, um, on US twenty through Island Park where a lot of the lodgepole pines were planted thirty or forty years ago. ITD has embarked on essentially clear-cutting the right-of-way or the influence zone of the highway. Much more challenging to do when you're in a mixed, uh, or large pine forest of mixed-age classes and with, uh, you know, significant terrain, uh, help from, you know, very steep canyons and, and mountainsides, so.
Make sure they don't designate those stands as old growth forests. Smiley intersection has a guard rail that's been down for a while. Are you guys looking at replacing that anytime soon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Two sections, actually.
Oh, perfect. And then, um, the Donley intersection, you'll kind of address that. I know that we have developers that are currently discussing the Donley intersection. Is there going to be any kind of a community meeting so that Donley has, you know, an opportunity to speak on that? Um, I know the developers are working with you, but I think it's imperative that the community gets to have part of that conversation. And then we actually have a project this year to do some repaving right there. And I hate to spend money on repaving if something's gonna happen in the next five years in that intersection. That would be a waste of our money.
Are you speaking of the intersection of Donley, uh, Highway fifty-five and Roseberry?
Mm-hmm.
Certainly if there's any, uh, improvements planned there, um, I think it would behoove us to, you know, look out for some broader discussions and input on that. You may recall, Commissioner, uh, that intersection was substantially improved, what, eighteen or so years ago from, you know, I think we had twenty-two paved, fleet of pavement with twenty-four foot of road striped on it at the time. Uh, did basically a right-of-way to right-of-way improvement through Donley. That's certainly satisfactory to us as far as existing traffic goes, but if it's gonna grow significantly or change, we'll certainly, uh, think about how we explore some options there. And I think either through a corridor study or a discreet, uh, effort with the development, we can certainly, uh, explore some options.
As I say, additionally, I, I do know that they are, um, having a large develop, uh, proposed there. And as you know, they'll have to go through a public hearing.
Yeah, so we do have large developments planned on the, over the other side of the S-Bridge right now. Also, we're trying to improve the S-Bridge. So that's gonna already add some congestion at that intersection, so.
Well, and I think, Jeff, don't we have a, uh, that section from the Highway fifty-five pass to the fire station on for what, twenty-five or twenty-six to get re? Or is it this year?
Next year.
Next year?
Yeah.
And we're hoping we can figure out some turn lanes off of that as well. And I don't know what kind of right-of-way we're looking at or what's available, but.
Jeff doesn't think we're gonna get turn lanes because we're using all of the existing. And that's why I'm saying that we need to be working together on that intersection and not putting money behind something that is just gonna, you know, disappear. But if you guys are talking development, then Jeff, you probably need to have a conversation with these guys, too.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, one of the things that, uh, we prefer to see and usually see on very large developments is a traffic impact study. When a development isn't immediately abutting a highway, a lot of times the requirement for such a TIS will come from the local land use jurisdiction. So from the county or from a city. Uh, but we'll certainly participate in helping to scope such a TIS to make sure that we're looking at the right intersections or the right topics. Examples of what, you know, might be considered there would be, as you're discussing, the need for additional lanes, uh, such as dedicated turn lanes, um, or the need for some, you know, modification to the intersection control. So currently that's a two-way stop-controlled intersection where the highway doesn't stop, but the local road does. You know, where you to get enough traffic on it, options like signalization would have to be examined to see if that would be necessary. And then what lanes, what lane configuration would go along with that?
That's why I would just like Donley to have an opportunity to have that, you know, discussion. I, I think it's time to have, you know, the community come together. Uh, there's significant concern about that intersection. And so whether it's signalization or whatever else that looks like, I think we do need to try and find some turning lanes on and off, at least West Roseberry. The school's right there on the other side. So there is starting to be a significant impact to that area. So it's time maybe for a community conversation. Certainly the corridor study is gonna help, but I haven't heard a date certain yet that that's got, gonna happen. And that's, I will definitely be at the June meeting and putting some requests in, but.
With regard to the, the highway right-of-way there, Commissioner, uh, ITD has eighty-foot of width through Donley. And with the improvements that were made, uh, in the two thousands, uh, we've essentially filled that right-of-way. So, uh, the buildings north of Roseberry, many of them are zero lot line. They have no setback. Uh, so they're old storefront stop buildings. And those are, are right up to the back of sidewalk. The sidewalk, parking and, and the three lanes in town currently fill that entire right-of-way. So, um, if there were modifications needed within the right-of-way, you know, the first option would be looking at what effect that would have on parking, um, or pedestrian facilities. And then, you know, potentially you'd be talking about impacts to private properties that could be pretty, or that's significant.
There is a, uh, vacant lot on the northwest corner that is, it's, it's not the same property as the, um, the restaurant. The Chinese restaurant moved in there, but there is a separate lot on that northwest corner that, you know, there's no building on it yet. Definitely should be acquired if possible in order to provide some turn lanes there. May as well take advantage of something that's still vacant if the opportunity arises, so.
Well, and the other thing that we kind of want to throw out too is we have an issue, on the way to Tamra, I call the S-Bridge, and it's rated good. So we can't get any, really any federal funding to fix it or replace it. But if we do find some funding to replace it, we're gonna have to shove that traffic north on Norwood and come out Sheline while we replace that bridge. We do have some paving projects on Norwood that are gonna happen in the next year or two. But just so you guys are aware, down the road, that there may be a, a big impact on that Sheline-ITD intersection as well. But it shouldn't be long-term, but it's, that's coming down the road too. So it's all growing pains.
Did you guys get a chance to go look at that and?
No, we haven't yet. And I, well, I wanted to meet with you, but we haven't had a chance to meet up and go out there. But we've talked about it. Well, we'd like to get out there and look at it. Uh, what, I think what you're referring to is the sand shed that we have right there, or I guess salt shed, no, that we have there at Sheline and the highway.
Well, and on the south side, it's a Ninethole power chunk of ground that's been fenced in. We've kind of been in discussion with them as well. Maybe do some trading or something for that, to build that. We've kinda been in discussion with them as well, and maybe doing some trading or something for that, to build that. So that road is wide enough for accommodate that much traffic too, but.
So right now, it's a gravel road, but you, is it, is that right? Is it paved, but you plan to widen it, right?
Um, more Norwood right now, we haven't got any plans for Sheline down the road.
The plan would be to have that as a secondary route.
And I think a lot of folks in Tammerack would go that direction and then take a left on the highway and go north if they want to. Same thing with folks coming south, they turn off there and come to Tammerack instead of, well, it just gives them another alternative. But if we have to replace the S Bridge, we're gonna need that really. Really bad.
As a detour, essentially?
And we're looking at, you know, all opportunities to try and get additional north-south corridors through there. So when Little Donner is shut, you gotta go Clear Creek all the way up West Mountain to get back around that. We've had accidents where it's closed the road for, you know, hours and hours. And so we're trying to figure out how you start bypassing some of these areas with additional, uh, traffic corridors. Farm and Markets one, if you can get past the lake or the, uh, Gold Dust Bridge, Gold Fork, thank you. So we're, we're looking at all those. So anything that could be different, um, traveling routes, and that's in our, on our plan that we just did. We'd love to see West Mountain improved, but, I mean, we're talking a hundred million dollars north to south to try and do something there, so. Yeah. What other opportunities do we have? And certainly Smiley goes over the river. Smiley is one that we should be thinking about improvement in the long term. Sheline is the other one that we should be thinking about for improvement. Lane, Sheline.
Sheline.
Thank you. Jeff, Sheline doesn't go over the river though, correct? It's Smiley.
Goes over Lake Fork Creek.
Goes over Lake Fork Creek, but then you gotta go one way or another to get back to Smiley to go over. And so Smiley needs improved too. So that's another one that we're gonna be looking at. You know, what does that intersection look like in the long term? The creek's right there, it's gonna take some major work to be able to improve that one. And then Sixty Lane, the ten acres, you guys are still thinking about potentially something there? You have that on a comprehensive plan? So we have ten acres at Sixty Lane, right beside your guys'. We would like to be able to do something with that, some kind of a, either a trade or, you know, how can we help support either some kind of a, I don't know, roadside area or something, but.
A rest area?
We won't, yeah, we won't, um, sell that until we see if that's something you guys want to utilize in the future.
Chairman Commissioners, we are, uh, very aware of the longstanding desire to, to have a site developed there. We don't currently have a discreet rest area program, uh, but we do have, uh, programs that we could apply to put that in. I think it's probably best at this output if, uh, outside if we would put that into our corridor study as identifying the need for such facilities. Because then I could take into that, uh, study the account of where other facilities exist in the corridor rather easily, so.
If you're gonna do a slow-moving vehicle lane there, that would probably also need to incorporate that, that piece. And then last thing I had was Rainbow Bridge replacement. You know, what is, are you guys still on track to redo that one the next ten years?
Yes, Commissioner, great question, and.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna touch that section again.
We do have that, uh, that project programmed. We are preparing to start engaging with the stakeholder community this year on that. In fact, that'll be this spring, that'll be very soon that we start that engagement. There is, um, consultant team already in place that's looking at, uh, the geotechnical conditions there as well as the bridge design. And it'll help us with, uh, the public involvement. It'll have some environmental challenges with the historic structure and the river and the railroad and other things that we'll have to work through. So certainly not an easy project, but one that we're excited to be getting started on.
It'll be starting twenty twenty-four then, really?
We'll be starting, uh, yes, that, that development outreach effort here in twenty-four. Uh, the project is currently programmed, uh, in the latter years of our program, so, for construction.
I don't know the exact dates, but in talking to the public involvement team, they're already starting to work on the public involvement plan. And I would expect this year we'll start to have public meetings on Rainbow Bridge as well.
Great. Anybody else have anything they wanna ask?
So from us, we're gonna give you a letter of support for the study on the trees and a letter of support for a comprehensive plan.
For corridor study.
Corridor study.
Oh, sorry, corridor study.
Yeah, and just, I'm assuming you'll keep us in the loop on when you guys have those public meetings, it'll be, come out, all that kinda stuff.
Yeah, and we're also gonna work on a series of meetings in, uh, in, in late April, probably early May, the May timeframe, to do outreach with cities and, and staff in all of our, well, eight of our ten counties. We were gonna, outside a canyon, we're gonna do specific meetings with our planning and development services staff and even some of our engineering staff to talk about projects or whatever questions they have. We've had quite a bit of new staff, both in our planning and development side, and we'd like to get out and, uh, talk to folks ahead. So, um, certainly we'll make sure that your staff knows and, and you guys can come to those meetings if you would like.
Excellent.
Chairman, but, um, we wanna get out and, and I think Jason wants to meet more people as well. And so, uh, we'll be out and about this spring, uh, ahead of our June meeting and letting people know about that June meeting too, so they also have an opportunity, uh, to go speak with the board.
And specific, Mr. Chairman, to the Rainbow Bridge, um, as you might imagine, it's a little bit hard to engage the public directly on a corridor like fifty-five because so much of the traffic traveling the route are vacationers or seasonal traffic that, that live on one end or the other, or both, uh, but not so much in the middle. So I think what you'll see with the approach to projects like Rainbow and the corridor study when it comes is a more of a stakeholder-driven approach. You'll certainly have specific invites to participate in that as well as other, you know, elected or appointed bodies and cities and staff and, uh, you know, rafting companies and cattle haulers and. We've got a long list of, uh, investors, stakeholders that we'll reach out to.
We do chuckle, 'cause when we're in a big meeting anywhere in the state and we complain about fifty-five, half the people raise their hand and go, I know, I have a cabin up there. I was on there last weekend. Like, so does a lot of our elected officials, so let's do something with fifty-five. That would be really important. They know exactly what we're talking about every time we say it, oh yeah, I saw it last weekend.
Thank you, guys.
This ferry project gave us a great opportunity to reflect our stakeholder outreach, so we're, uh.
There were some good things and a couple of bad things on that, but it, it'll work out long-term. Yeah. Well, I appreciate you guys, we're out of time. Thank you very much for coming up and meeting with us and good to meet you all. And we look forward to seeing you later on this year, some of these places, and, uh, appreciate your help.
Please let me know when the June meeting is as soon as possible, so I can get on my calendar.
We'll send something out and, and I'll, I'll touch base with you.
Okay, that'll be, uh, ski line, ski line, ski line?
Sheline.
Sheline, sorry.
I'm a very old family up here.
And we, we still wanna, I mean, I'd like to walk with you and look forward on June twelfth, Commissioner.
Hey, thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming in person, we appreciate that. There's no snow on the ground, so therefore it's a good day to come.
Spring is here.
Spring is sprung.
Oh, let's hope. Ellen said he wanted more snow.
I want more snow, I'm not ready for winter to quit, but.
Hey, hey, we're ready for winter to quit.
So at this time being, this is the end of our agenda for the morning session, we will recess and see everyone back here one o'clock.
What you got?
Good to see you.
Good seeing you.